Here.
Tracy Marquez.
Here.
Tracy Diaz-Locum.
Here.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Rabbit.
Here.
Lawson.
Here. Okay. Let's see, report out on closed session from April 22nd. The board received information and accepted legal advice from counsel. So, welcome, everybody. Happy Earth Day. And just so everybody knows, all the members of the public that are here, you're muted when you're joined. And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. For Spanish translation, there's a number to call into. Are we able to just put that in the chat and call to the people's yet? Or do I need to read it all? Why am I echoing?
There's a lot of feedback.
I shouldn't be echoing.
So Janet, Ellie's putting it in the chat right now.
She got it. Okay, thank you. So check the chat for the login information for Spanish interpretation. We will hear public comments. And on the agenda, there's a link to a Google Doc where you can fill out a speaker's card. We do need your names so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. We do have a couple of cards right now. And the link to the Google Doc is also in the chat box now.
I can hear the echo as well.
What?
I can hear the echo.
Yeah, I'll figure it out once I'm done with this. And public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic. And if the item you would like to speak to is not on the agenda, you'll be called to the podium during item five, oral communication. If you're speaking on an item that is on the agenda, you'll be on when that item is being addressed. And just a reminder that because we're meeting via teleconference, all votes are going to be by roll call. With that, we have our pledge of allegiance. This time, we will be led by Mrs. Barstad's kindergarten class from room three at Henry Ford.
So I'm gonna mute and then just unmute you, Janet.
Here we go. What? I.
Please arrange standing for Larry.
All right. Thank you to Mrs. Barstad and room three. If any of you are here, we really appreciate you leading us in the pledge today. Let's see, we are on to, are there any changes to the agenda? None? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Cecilia.
Second.
That was Maria.
Maria.
So Eliana, can we have a roll call? Vote.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Tracy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. Moving on to oral communication. Ellie, I see one name here. Was there another one?
I have not received any other speakers cards, but I've received emails that people are unable to connect.
Okay. Oh, and this speaker's card is actually for an item 13.1. So it's not actually oral communication. Did we update the agenda with the R C S D password?
I did. I did include the R C S D password.
Okay. I don't know how to get people on here with. Yeah. So if we have no oral communication other than the 13.1, we can go on and we'll address that when we come to that item. Onto the bond program consent items. Item nine. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dennis. Is there a second?
Second, Maria.
Maria. Roll call vote, please.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Tracy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. Okay, item 10.1. Recommendation for the approval of agreement for abatement construction with A T I at Hoover Community School. Do we have any questions or comments on that? Will, you were talking, but you're muted.
Will, unmute.
Anne, you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Yeah, does anyone have any questions?
No. I see people shaking their heads no. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved. I'll second it.
Dennis and Alisa. Roll call vote, please.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Chrissy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. Item 10.2. Approval of new gym and modernization project change order.
Does anyone have any questions on this item?
It's like a bunch of bobbleheads.
No, I see no.
So moved. This is Maria.
Maria. Is there a second? Who was that? Sorry. Cecilia. Roll call vote.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Chrissy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. Okay. Item 10.3, adoption of resolution 24. Questions, comments?
Yeah, so this is the upgrade of the district's energy management system. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
So moved.
Alisa. Alisa.
Second, Cecilia.
Roll call vote.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Hi.
Tracy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. Where are we? Wait.
Correct.
Are we on 10.4 now?
Yes.
Approval of agreement for energy management systems.
Yes, 10.4 is one of the supporting components of the energy management system, the intrusion design and the security camera system design, which will both tie into the E M S system. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
I just want to say that I'm really happy we're doing this. So when we're all back, we'll be safer. So that's great. Thank you for all your work, Dawn. Well, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
So I guess I'll move it. How about that? So moved.
Alisa.
Second, Cecilia.
Cecilia. And a vote, please.
McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Chrissy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. And item 10.5. Recommendation to approve the construction management consultant fee reconciliation proposals with R G M Creamer. Were there any questions on that?
In that case, so moved.
Thank you, Maria.
Second.
Cecilia, second. And a vote, please.
Tracy McBride.
Hi.
Chrissy Marquez.
Hi.
Tracy Diaz-Locum.
Hi.
Chrissy McAvoy.
Hi.
Chrissy Lawson.
Hi. All right. Well, thanks for being with us, Will.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are moving on to item 11.1, a discussion on COVID-19. John, did you want to?
Yeah, I will start. I just have to mute.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. So what I'm gonna start out with, to begin with, is Elisa had sent me a set of questions that she wanted to have addressed during this time. And there are some that I can address and others that we're gonna have and we're gonna have to wait to get further information. But just to make you all aware, at this point in time, you did, everyone did receive the superintendent's letter that went out last week on Friday. And it gave an update on the distance learning, which I want to thank both Linda and Wendy for working with staff development and making sure that we got the nuances that we wanted to start with, with our staff online. And it took a lot of work, a lot of effort. And hopefully, it's a little bit more easier for parents. I did receive an email from one parent who was a bit concerned about the office hours of the teachers. But I have talked to the principal and the principal has met with that parent by email and said that she was gonna send something out further regarding her school and what she meant by, what it means by office hours for her. So I'm very pleased with what's out right now. I know we may be hearing, at this point in time, from staff, you know, if they're having difficulties or if they're not having difficulties, but we're here to support them. So that is up and running. One of the questions from Alisa was regarding meals and how many meals are we serving? So in talking with C N S, our child nutrition system. So yesterday, I beg your pardon, on the 20th, they served 1,090 meals. And today, sorry, phone's going off. I don't know why. And yesterday, on the 21st, they served 1,210. So as I look at the amount of food that is being distributed, it averages anywhere from, one day on 4/15, they served 3,837. And from yesterday, it was 1,210. So it fluctuates. And understand when it's fluctuating, it may be students from throughout Redwood City that are coming to get meals because it's your 18 and younger. We don't ask, you know, what school you go to. And also, some of our students may be going to the Sequoia High School District also with their older siblings when they're getting food. So what I will do is, as C N S, at the end of each week, I can send you this spreadsheet so that way you'd have an update. So that's where we are at this point in time. We started off with, when we first started on March 16th, it was 460 meals. So as of yesterday, we're up to 1,210. So it fluctuates, as I said. And it could be because students are going to the Sequoia High School District for meals. And also, when we have more students on our end, it could be that their siblings are coming with them to receive meals or it's other children within Redwood City that are coming to the schools to receive meals.
Well, and I also realized if you look at 4/15, that's the Wednesday, so they're picking up meals for Thursday and Friday as well. So I was trying to figure out, why is that number so vastly different?
You're correct.
That would be triple what the regular, anyway, that's helpful just to get a sense of how many meals. And certainly, I really appreciate, that's a lot of work for our staff, you know, when there's a variance to know how much to prep for and all of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then the next question you had was about assistance being provided to our most needy families. And I know Patti, Patti's not, Patti's on as a participant that she's on. We can't, I don't think I can.
Some of the directors are not able to get on. I got texts, so some of them aren't able to get on.
Yeah, they're not able to get on.
Patti's actually on under attendee.
Right, so she can't get on. So right, so.
Well, no, Kyle, Kyle should be able to move her over.
I can elevate her.
Could you elevate her? That would be great.
Yeah, I'll find her right now.
I'm still not able to get on as a panelist using my cellphone. I mean, not a panelist, a participant.
There's Patti. So Patti, if you would unmute yourself and you can give an update on the different types of support that we're providing to our neediest families.
Hi, yes. Unmuted and participant. Well, basically, after five weeks, at least, the community schools department has kind of reshifted to what their work would have looked like onsite, where we receive requests from either families or teachers or any district employee helping a family navigate, locate services, connect. Whereas at the beginning, there was just a lot of confusion around even information dissemination and how to provide at distance essential services from mentoring to counseling to some of our after-school partners wanting to support with tutoring. So now we're kind of in a better groove. We have increased our second harvest distributions dramatically. We're getting 500-plus families coming through the drive-through with each one. We're having multiple a week. Second Harvest has been great. They've been bringing management out to help kind of with any tensions or learning the process. And Dawn and Martin and their team have been great. They're supporting us with getting law enforcement to sometimes go out there and do some traffic control. It does get really backed up. I can imagine maybe some of the board members have gotten some feedback or frustrations about it, but it gets backed up precisely because, I mean, we feel it's just such a big need right now for families to be able to get food free. What else? So obviously, the biggest need right now is socio-economic and social-emotional. At a financial level, we partner with the Fair Oaks Community Center, who's like the core agency receiving funds, city funds, R C F funds, county funds. What that has created for them and us is a bit of a bottleneck around manpower. They got within a week over 500 rent assistance requests. And it is kind of a lengthy process. Even though the criteria to get rent assistance is low, we don't ask about documentation, proof about your rent agreement or your employment is very lax. We even allow families to do their own testimony about, I was an hourly worker or an informal worker or I don't have a formal rent agreement. And we, they take all of that, but you still have to provide it. So what we do is we, all my team and a lot of other agencies got trained as rent assistance navigators. And then we get assigned a caseload and we just help families go through the process. They literally text us pictures or a screenshot of the text their employer might have sent to tell them to not come for the foreseeable future, that kind of stuff. But it is quite lengthy. I do want to give a shout out that I feel all the local agencies have really stepped up. So at the Fair Oaks Community Centers, not only their core staff, but right now, most of Chris Beth's staff is working out of there, both their parks and rec team that do after-school programs, Red Martin or city events are just, they rotate to be able to provide in-person services there as well as online. They now have a call center. Once you go online and try the process, if you get stuck at any point, it just tells you, oh, we'll call you. And then someone calls back and helps them through the process. Redwood City 2020 is also supporting that. I don't know if you guys saw, they put out also a Redwood City North Fair Oaks resource guide similar to ours. But there's just been a lot of coordination. However, I will say it does move slowly in terms of the amount of requests they're getting for support. In terms of social-emotional support, we're not getting a lot of requests directly, not through the Google form at all. But we are struggling sometimes with reaching families we might have been worried about pre-COVID. It's a hit or miss how and when you reach them. I appreciate also Student Services and Antonia helping us think through that flow chart of when to get worried, what are next steps. We're also coordinating with the county's Child Abuse Prevention Council and domestic violence agencies around what other resources exist around, you know, family welfare. And I would say that's it.
So Alisa, did you want to?
Oh, I just, so one follow-up question. Thank you very much, Patti. I really appreciate everything that you're doing, the city and all the local resources. I know it's amazing, the need out there. And, you know, we're lucky in our community to have community schools, to have the North Fair Oaks Center because there's a lot of communities that do not have that. So I know they're not getting the resources maybe as quickly as they want, but at least there's a place to go, right? And hopefully, more resources will continue. On the food, I did hear in the north part of the county that in their food lines that we're running out of food at Second Harvest. Do you know if we've had that same situation? Or has everybody who's gotten in line gotten a food box?
Hit or miss, depending on the site. We're getting better at quantifying. We have doubled and sometimes tripled the amount of food we're getting from Second Harvest at certain places. To make up for that, I would say mostly, we're right at the cusp. Like, we're pushed, right? Sometimes we miss, but because we're having multiple in a week, families can then go the next day or something. But they are increasing as the, as the need arises. They're also short-staffed on their end, even though they do have a part of the National Guard helping. But there is a vast amount of food. That, I will say, the food agencies locally are giving out like crazy. They're now, Second Harvest is giving out through other local agencies, not just us. And there are basically daily pantries wherever you look in the North Fair Oaks area.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
And then also, just to add a little bit more, we, the superintendents had a meeting with Jackie Speer, Congresswoman Jackie Speer on Friday. And we were able to talk to her about what we felt our needs were. And in my discussion with her, it was to reiterate that, yes, it's great that, you know, our students have devices, but our most neediest do not. And so devices is one thing that we needed to loan. And Kyle's gonna give you an update of what those numbers are in a few moments. The other piece that I was really concerned about when I spoke to her was the internet access, especially on the east side, the Fair Oaks area, the Taft area. Because once we take back those hotspots, because they're only given to us for, I believe it's four months, four to five months, and then we return them. And if we go back into the situation again, then it means getting the hotspots again for those kids. What we really need in that area is some type of a tower out there that will allow them to have access. So my plea to her, along with other superintendents, was if she, at the federal level, could get an outside entity, A T and T, Verizon, whomever, to work with the federal government to put something out there in that area that would help us, would be, we'd be very grateful. And the other piece that I spoke about was the social-emotional piece, that we need more support in that arena, more so than what we have right now. I know parents are definitely filling out forms and so forth, but there's a but here. Many of the parents that are filling them out sometimes cannot get a Spanish speaker. And that's what they need is a Spanish speaker. So if there's some way to, whether it were to be hired or to contract or something, to have additional staff through the county, Sammentail County, that are, they are Spanish-speaking, they are available during different times during the day and different times during the evening, even if they're doing a phone call, would be very helpful to us. So in that realm, I wanted you to know about that part of COVID-19, the conversation that Supes had with Jackie Speer. Okay, Kyle, the next one is yours on the number of computers, hotspots and so forth.
Okay. So since we started this process of at-home learning, we issued Chromebooks to any student that required or asked for a Chromebook to be issued to them. We did get 500 hotspots loaned to us for several months, as Dr. Baker mentioned. That is on top of the hotspots we already had available for students at Kennedy and McKinley from their one-to-one program. So as of right now, just at Kennedy and McKinley, we have just over 1,200 Chromebooks out between those two schools. And then with the process that we used to issue Chromebooks to the students at the other 10 schools, we issued another 1,791 Chromebooks out. So we have a total of 3,079 Chromebooks out right now. And that is based, based upon the number of just students in grades two through eight. If you look at the percentage of just the students outside of the one-to-one J F K and McKinley population, that's 40.11% of all the students who were eligible, received Chromebooks. As far as the hotspots go, we've issued a total of 558 hotspots, 439 of the loners and 119 in the group from McKinley and Kennedy. The percentage of students just from the loner hotspots is 9.83%. We've also been holding tech support appointments at the district office because we want to make sure that we're maintaining social distancing so we're not having any more than five families come in, in any 15-minute period. We have three techs onsite and they're basically doing exchanges. There's no troubleshooting, there's no long appointments. It's just come in, exchange your Chromebook for another one and then, and then leave. We have received 231 requests for tech support via the phone line, people leaving messages on the main district line. And 189 on our English Google form, 117 on our Spanish Google form, for a total of 306 on the Google form. And then 537 total requests for support from families in the district since we have gone to the at-home or remote teaching model.
Any questions on that? Questions, comments?
So just a question regarding those last numbers you said, Kyle. Is that in the last few days or is that just altogether after we went to at-home learning?
That's just, that's from the beginning, since we went to at-home learning until today's birthday.
So first of all, thank you very much, Kyle, to you and your team. I know you guys have really done an amazing job giving out all the Chromebooks and hotspots and tech support. It's a lot to roll out in a couple of months, so thank you. I did have a question. And John, I don't know if this one's for Kyle or for somebody else, but it's sort of a tag-on, I think I put it in the email to you. Is, do we know how many students have either not logged on at all or are not logging on regularly? And when I say logging on, I suppose I also just mean connecting with the school or the teacher in some way. And I know, I think the last you gave the update, you talked about, you know, the office managers and teachers and others are following up to try to make sure all the students were connected. So if you could just talk a little bit about that. I mean, it's some technology, but it's more just connecting into the classroom, the virtual classroom that we're having.
Right, that's your next question.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, so I'm gonna answer that a little bit. So we're able to see the number of students who are logging into our Google Apps domain. And we're able to see the number of students who are logging into Clever on a daily basis, so we can see those statistics. Neither one of the base tools gives us a really good picture of who hasn't, who is and who isn't logging in, but I did find another report in the backend of our Google Apps domain yesterday, which will allow me to basically take a list and download all of our students. And it will show me the date of their last login. So I can see, we can go, go through those numbers. I downloaded it yesterday, actually provided a copy of it to Antonio. So we can actually see the last day they logged in. So if somebody hasn't logged in for three weeks, we know that they're not engaged.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the bigger picture, I was just wondering, that's great, so there's a way to do it technologically. So it's really up to you, I mean, or the, you know, the teacher, the principal, whoever sort of has the students. But I know that, I think earlier on, we were concerned that some students weren't even checking in at all, and we were having trouble getting ahold of them. So have we been able to get ahold of all the students at this point? And are, no, okay.
No, no. And, and let me segue into your next question. Thank you so much, Kyle.
Wait, before, before you go to the next question. So that number of students you don't think connecting is overstated, because your data doesn't collect all the teachers that are using Zoom, correct?
It doesn't, no. It doesn't collect the data on Zoom at all. It collects the data on their Google Apps account. So all of our students have to connect, because all of our teachers are required to have Google Classrooms in grades through, I believe, three through eight. Dr. Montes can clarify if I think it's two through eight or not. But we asked all teachers to have a Google Classroom in grades three through eight, so they would have to log into their Google Apps account to, to get into Google Classroom. So that would be a way to at least measure some level of engagement. We don't know if there's some engagement via video conferencing via Zoom, because we can't see those statistics.
Right, but we know that there are teachers that are using Zoom, so you're not capturing those. That's why I say that kids that aren't connecting is overstated.
Yeah.
So Antonio did go on to, we've asked the principals to give us numbers, to give us numbers of, you know, students that are, they've connected, but maybe they have not connected again, they're not connecting regularly. And so at this point in time, what he has is district-wide, and district-wide, they are, it's, this number has to be split in manner of, which we have to do, how we're going to find out how to do this, we're going to ask for Kyle's help, but those that have only connected on sporadically, and those that have connected, have not connected on at all. The total for those two groups, the sporadic people and those not connected at all, is 349 district-wide. And so when we were meeting with the principals yesterday, the, there is a flow chart that the county office helped Student Services administrators put together in regard to connecting with families. And there is a check that the principals do with their teachers according to the questions that are asked, when children are checking in and not checking in, and then the name of the student who hasn't, and the one that doesn't do it often enough. And what happens is that office staff starts calling them first, and then if the office staff still can't get ahold of them, then it becomes the task of Michelle Ramon, she does it, and so does Antonio. And he went through that explicitly again yesterday with the principals. But this is a soft number that I'm giving you. It's not, I, like I say, it's a combination of both, so it's 349 total at this point in time. So we'll, we'll dig into it deeper, because we need to get to know who those students are that are not connecting, what is the reason they are not connecting? And for those that are just doing it sporadically, why? You know, at first, we thought maybe it was because there are several children in the classroom, and maybe they only had one hotspot, and so the hotspot was not enough. But then Kyle went and met with Verizon and CCI, and they increased the bandwidth for it to accept more users as one hotspot. So that piece has been corrected. So now we really have to understand what is going on with the other students that maybe are not connecting at all. So we'll dig deeper into that and then get back to you on it.
And, John, can I say, I know that the teachers are also checking in with the students. After the phone call, they do send a little email, and then they're told that if the student or the parent doesn't reply, the principal will be following up, or the vice principal, they also tell them if they need support, who to reach out to, to get organized, at least in some schools, that's what some of the parents were saying.
Okay, good, good. I know principals are involved in it also, but I know the office staffs have been extremely involved. And we have quite a few school sites that, they're fine, they don't have, they have zero kids, that they have always, the whole school's been connected in some way. So we have some of our schools that they have zeros there for connectivity. They're connecting, they're meeting with the kids, so it's from school to school, it was really interesting to see this layout. But we will look into it and then get back to you on that. The next.
Thank you, thank you very much on that, John. And then I was thinking, you know, some of it also might be, if you looked at our absentee rate that we normally have, it'd be interesting to see, are they the same kids that are chronically absent or absent, or is there a different set of kids? So mostly just, as long as we're reaching out and trying to get them connected and figure it out. So anyway, I appreciate all of that.
Okay.
It's a lot.
Your next question was on extra money spent to date on COVID-19, and, and any changes or needs. I know we did, you know, provide the, our office staff, and so the business office, and members in HR that needed to work from home but did not have a device. And some of them did have, some of them needed to have a printer that they were able to scan, so a couple of those, I think, were purchased also. But as far as, you know, other needs, we will definitely need some additional custodial supplies, I'm sure, as we move down the deep cleaning realm that we're going to be doing in that manner. And then also the PPE equipment, the gloves, the masks, because at this point in time, we've just got an order of masks in, if I'm not mistaken, it was on Monday. But, you know, I think there were only like, what, Wendy, I'm going to, you can not, 500, 600, something like that? And, but, you know, if people are coming in and doing cleaning, the deep clean that they're going to be doing, there's going to be masks that are going to have to be used every day. So that's going to probably be a cost to, to our needs. And as we move forward, we'll bring back definitely more information to you of our needs and how much we're spending. I know Priscilla's, I know she's keeping a chart of some sort, because just in case we're able to go back and get reimbursed from, whether it be FEMA, or whether it be some other entity, she wants to make sure she has her backup material to apply for the funding. So that was your, that was the one question. And the next question you have, what are the urgent needs by the district, school, staff, families? Well, I'm going to, I'm going to move down to when we're talking about re-entering, because that's when the needs are going to become very great. At the superintendent's meeting, the last one was on Tuesday, Tuesday, and we have one again on Friday. They are going to be working on protocols. By "they," I mean the county office of ed is spearing the protocols for reopening schools when that occurs. With that being said, this plan will be developed, and then it'll be brought to the superintendent's to review, and we get to have our input. And I'm sure that those of you that are on the calls with the Sammataill School Boards Association, along with other elected officials, will probably also be able to look at that draft when it's completed. The part that concerns me most is when you hear the social distancing and the recommendations or the comments that our governor has given during his announcements that he does every day at about 12 o'clock. I just listened to one today again, and he said schools were further down the line, further down the list to open. He was not worried about schools right now, he's worried about all these other entities first, which I get, which I get. But, the but here is social distancing that they want us to do. What does that mean for our teachers? What does it mean for our staff? What does it mean for the administrators? If you're social distancing, and they're saying that the guidelines that we, that are being used right now for those entities that have childcare, for the essential workers, the doctors and nurses, so forth, it's 12 to 1, it's 12 to 1. And Governor Newsom made, and one of his comments this week, he brought, he said 10 to 1, and I go, 10 to 1, what, 10 to 1? So the needs, when you, when you talk about what are going to be the needs of the, the schools and the staff and the district, they're going to be great. What does that look like? So we'll have to see within the next few weeks how this all plays out with these protocols and what they look like. They're hoping to have them ready by the week, during the week of May 4th, so we'll see. But we're going to have to meet with our teachers to understand what this will look like. We're going to have to also get, talk to parents, so they understand what it looks like when we come back. And he doesn't want to have assemblies, he doesn't want us doing lunches like we normally do lunches, so what does that mean? And, you know, if you look at the news, and I believe it was Finland, and now they're all back, and even when you look at the clip about the schools, you see that they're distant in the classroom the best they can, but when the kids leave, they're like in, you know, little bunches, and they're going all over. So they're, they're not able to do the social distancing in that regard. And then he wants us to change how we do recesses and so forth. So that's a whole big concern for myself and for staff, and, and to see how we do this when we re-enter. And I just hope that, I know the county will listen, the county superintendent will listen to the superintendents, but I'm hoping the bigger picture is, is that the, the state level will listen, because it is going to cost extra dollars. It is going to cost extra dollars for us to do what they're hoping that we can, 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 that, what they're hoping that can occur, if they wanted to happen in that manner. So there's a whole other issue with that. So with that question, Elisa, it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a, it, there's no specific answer.
Yeah, no, that, that's helpful, what you said. And I mean, today, I'm, I think it was today on the county call, Assemblymember Kevin Mullen mentioned the budget hearings that they've had recently. And, you know, the state's looking at huge deficits, of course, moving forward. What did they say, Dennis? I think it was like 35 million next year, and then getting up to like.
Billion.
I'm sorry, billion, of course, billion. I always think it's million usually to us and billion to them, but yeah, billion, and then like 68 billion a couple of years down the road, and then from, for many years. And so of course, since education is 50% of the budget, we're going to be hit hard. So it is interesting, they're talking about needing more resources if you're going to 1 in 10, and yet they're also talking about probably cutting us. So, and they're using all the rainy day funds, which many of those, you know, I think originally were expected that they would help with education to sort of even things out, but those are all going away, helping with healthcare. And then they said any extra funding coming in will be prioritized for healthcare. So it's, it's pretty scary looking forward in terms of what this means to provide a quality education, take care of our staff, take care of the students and families that we're responsible for. So I, I'm glad to hear that the county is taking a lead, working with, you know, you, and I know they've been having conversations with school board members as well, just to come up with county protocols, because I think there is an opportunity there not to do it district by district, but to think about as a county, how do we want to do it? And hopefully economies of scale to help us think this through.
Right. And when you're even thinking of the cleaning, the cleaning that has to take place after the children leave for the day and the next day, he wants us to, the, the, by he, the governor, he says those rooms need to be thoroughly cleaned every day, you know, we can't go to the schedules that we're using right now. So what does that mean for Redwood City? We're on that, you know, every, is it, I think it's every third day, if I'm not mistaken, right now? So that would definitely have to change. So there's a lot to think about, there's a lot that has to be planned, and it's going to, we're going to need additional revenue, resource. I said, I, when I speak, I always say resources, we need additional resources. That's always time, money, and people, and the biggest one is, is money, and of course, then finding the employees to, to, you know, to, to, to make sure that they can do the job. So it's, it's a large question, and I don't have a true answer for it. The other piece was, we talked about was, you know, we've always had a summer school here in.
So Dr. Baker, before, before you move on, I think it would be helpful for you to share the discussion we had today about the matrix for deep cleaning.
So I, I will, yes, that's, that's a good point. So, and then Wendy can pipe in on it, because she, and she's been working very closely with Martin. So, and, and I, and I was incorrect with some of my figures that I gave you, Dennis, but I'll correct it now. So the deep cleaning, what Martin has told me is that there will be two custodians in one room to clean a campus. So two custodians, the night and the day guy. And they'll go room by room, and Martin says it's two to three days per room to clean the room. So with that in mind, that's why we started this schedule that I'm going to allow Wendy to talk about at this point in time, which I know you all know about, because she met with you either individually or in groups of two. So if we were having to do something like that after each time the kids were in school every day, how, how would that work? Right now, we can do it, because we do not have the children there, we don't have staff there. But coming back to school, I don't know if the regulations are going to change for how classrooms are cleaned every day, every day the students leave the classroom, because doing it like we're doing right now is, is not only, and of course, it's the custodians' responsibilities, but doing it in that manner on a daily basis, we can't, we can't do that, we can't survive in that mode. And Wendy, I don't know if you wanted to add anything in regard to the schedule?
Sure, so thank you for that. So last week, it was determined, after really an analysis, as John had mentioned, about the rigorous cleaning schedule needed to bring people back, assuming in August, with the social distancing. So we went back and forth between one and two, and we're finally able to work out the two in one room, which is more efficient, but we still need, if you think about it, the custodial staff really cleans, and in this case, a deep cleaning, every surface on a campus, the library, you know, what used to be the computer lab, the office, all the classrooms, et cetera. And so I really want to say kudos to Martin and the staff, the custodial staff has been phenomenal. They are in for a big ride starting Monday. We put a schedule out, and I have to say, I'm so pleased we're the response. Many teachers emailed saying, thank you so much, I really appreciate your dedication to this, and staff, classified staff as well, that let us know that we were moving in the right direction. As you know, the week of, well, March 13th, teachers left the campus, and then the following week, the rest of the staff left campuses throughout our district, except, you know, of course, food service and some custodial staff are still there working, obviously, and other classifications. But the desire to really minimize the number of people on campus was an urgent matter for us. And so people left everything as-is. They literally, you know, for the most part, walked out the door. And so there was a need to help our custodial staff to get people back in for two reasons. One, to pick up any other distance learning items they may have forgotten or decided they needed at this time. And second, to prepare a very, in my opinion, a light job, considering what they're normally asked to do at the end of the year. And of course, usually they have student support for that, the teachers at least. So there was a modified list that was sent out to staff. We also wanted to make sure that parents were aware that our teachers were being diverted for this task, this very important task as well. So that communication, the principals. So that communication, uh, the principals sent out. Gloves and masks were provided, although the requirement started today actually for masks. Martin was able to get the masks out starting Monday. We had a little delay at some sites, but eventually everyone received their masks, certainly before the, the deadline. So that was helpful and I appreciate Martin's quick action on that. That was really wonderful. Um, we also are accommodating those people that are 65 or have underlying conditions. We're following all the public health order requirements, but certainly those are the two top that come to mind because, um, people that fall into those two categories are really, really need to be at home, um, more so. And so that's why there's that allowance, certainly. Um, and, you know, so that we can start on Monday. As of Monday, the schools will be closed for people to go in and get the items or to, we really don't want anyone on campus without the custodians can start this hard work. Staff were also given the option of coming in last weekend or this weekend if they, one, felt more comfortable or two, needed more time. We also have teachers that will be retiring or resigning, uh, and so we want to make sure that they had some extra time as well to, um, you know, to pack up some of their things. So once again, kudos to the classified staff. They have been just, I mean, amazing in this work in trying to, um, you know, continue forth with food service, the maintenance requirements of a district, because as you know, we're an essential business. And so just wanted to say kudos to them and kudos to our teachers. The distance learning was, is quite remarkable. I'm sure we'll talk about that in a bit. Um, so that's the update on the cleaning schedule.
And, and just to go back to, um, when I was going to talk about summer school, we, as the superintendents, um, we were all taken a little back, some of, the majority of us, not, I wouldn't say all of us, but I guess Dr. Morrow with his next, um, order may come out with some type of, we could have, if you can, you could have a modified summer school program. And I was one that said, I don't understand how I could have a modified summer school program with the deep cleaning going on and then having students at a 1 to 12 ratio coming in every day, leaving, then having to clean that room. I don't have the resources to do it. So I said, um, we normally do have, of course, uh, E S Y will continue, it'll be continuing as a distance learning program, a special ed. And, and I know the Boys and Girls Club has always supported us in doing a summer school program and working very closely with us. And this year they were doing it again, but they're thinking, I said, distance, you, you do a distance learning. So they're planning in that direction if we go. But to come into the classrooms with that 1 to 12 ratio that, that's part of the guidelines, if you have childcare for essential workers, we, number one, cannot afford it. And then children leave and get in there and do a really deep cleaning again. I just said for, for Redwood City, we couldn't do it. And then, then the other superintendent started chiming in too and saying, there's just no way that we can do it and, and still have to maintain the type of cleaning that we would need to do for a summer program. So we'll see what happens. It, it seems that it, it could come out, maybe he won't now since Nancy will take back to him what she heard. So we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll just wait and see. But, um, a modified program, and he said it would help us to get a better understanding of what this may look like when we open up schools. And I just said, and I said my piece and, and my piece was that I don't feel comfortable running a summer program in that fashion. So, so that was about summer school, about the plans for it. But, um, the teachers are doing a fantastic job and, and I know Linda and, and Wendy have been working with staff development closely, staff development's working closely with the teachers. We're getting information back from the teachers and so we're now going to have to probably relook at some of the things again, uh, because when you, when you, when you put out information and you put out what you want to be done, of course, they're the practitioners, they're the ones that are doing it on a day-to-day basis. So we have to get feedback from them to see what we need to change and how we need to, when that change occurs, how we, uh, definitely communicate that to fa- to families. Linda, did you want to say anything in regard to that?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, everyone. Good evening. Um, I think the, right now, what we're looking at is second grade because they were the last group to receive their Chromebooks. And so we initially had some thoughts. And so now the thing is to provide the professional development for those who need it to take that next step forward for the students to use, um, that platform, um, now. Uh, so that's the sessions that are starting next week, uh, for that group. For TK, uh, K first grade, uh, the, the challenge is because we don't have the devices for all of the families to ensure that if we are offering, um, online support, um, that all are able to access. Um, and not being able to access is the issue and is, you know, the issue with equity that we see statewide, right? Um, so, so thinking about their next steps, I think is, um, the, the, the response right now is to create kind of packets that are going out. Um, and so what we're looking at is the ability for teachers to share those amongst each other because there were obviously some, you know, wonderful examples and, um, and work that is being done in creating these learning opportunities, uh, for students. And then our next step, of course, is to work and better support those who might have , uh, learning challenges that could be English learners or those in RSP, et cetera. Um, so that's where our next step is.
Great. Thank you. Wendy?
Thank you. Um, I'm really proud I was able to speak to about 95, 6, 8 teachers last week. We had sent out information about, uh, key standards that, uh, students may have been introduced to, but might need to go back to, or new units, mainly because, for example, science and social studies has, has some new concepts. But the staff development team, I have to say, um, are, are just so amazing. They have stepped up in every facet that we've asked and created just great resources, um, really to help the teachers as best as they can. We know it's hard work. We know this type of learning was not what some people signed up for. They want, want to be with children right there with them, uh, and that's not happening right now. So a lot of patience is required to go through this time. And while it's not perfect, we're really trying to do the best we can. Um, and I say that over and over again. I want our teaching staff to know, just try to do the best you can, but we recognize that they have families and so forth. So trying to par down what they're already normally doing and providing guidance to them is really the best we can do at this time. So once again, kudos to the teachers, kudos to the staff development team for really jumping in. I've been just so impressed.
So I think that, that answers most of your, your questions, Alisa.
So are there other, uh, questions or comments from the board? We do have one speaker's card on this item, but I want to give the board a chance to talk if, if you would like to.
So I, so I just would like to share what a teacher, uh, wrote. Um, I'm learning a lot about online teaching. I will say our district is rocking all capitalism, capitals, the support and everything it has put together for us. So that's a huge bonus. Um, it was surreal to clean out the kids' desks and pack up the room for summer. Still processing that one.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, oh, go ahead, Dennis.
So I just wanted to thank professional development for all they're doing.
I, I just wanted to say thank you very much to, um, all the teachers and the staff development. Uh, I've been getting some emails from some teachers sharing, you know, different projects they're doing with some of the kids and it's great to see that. I've been hearing from some parents, um, how happy they are with, uh, some of the work they're seeing. And I know it's really hard and it's different and like Wendy just said, it's not perfect. Um, but it, you know, it's amazing if you think what, we're really about four or five weeks into this and just to go from sort of what we've always done in the classroom to sort of moving to this and everything that's taken. I know we have a lot of teachers on the meeting tonight. Um, I can see some of the names and then there's other phone numbers. So I just want to say thank you very much. And then, uh, like Dennis said, the staff development team has just really rocked it, uh, to really support the teachers and get all the materials out. And then I also do want to just say thanks to the principals, of course, the assistant principals and all the classified staff, um, you know, listing out the custodians and the food service workers and office managers and, you know, just everybody. And then of course, the district staff, I, you guys have been working so hard. And, uh, John, I know you're on all these extra meetings, kind of strategically and leadership-wise, trying to figure out, you know, what we're doing as a county and what we need to be doing as a district. So just thanks to everybody. I know how hard everyone's working. Um, and I, you know, and I know there's some parents who are, uh, and students who are frustrated and not happy and either want more or want less or want something different or what have you. And, you know, I think what I've been encouraging parents to do is talk to their teachers, talk to the principal, um, communicate, you know? And I think this is a work in progress and we'll just keep trying to meet everyone's needs that we can. Um, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So I want to just, I want to echo the thanks to all of our teachers and our principals and all the staff and, um, the cabinet. Everybody's working incredibly hard. Um, I'm really proud of our district. I'm on, you know, a lot of calls and meetings and it seems like, you know, we, we got out of school, uh, March 13th and the district just pivoted the way that we do. And I know a lot of districts are still trying to catch up to speed. Some are just starting their distance learning, even though they've been out as long as we have. Um, and so I just want to say kudos to everybody for all of your hard work and, um, and I, I really appreciate the collaboration with, you know, the county superintendents from around everywhere and the school boards and, um, everybody's working together, um, really well and sharing information and best practices. And it's, it, it's been really amazing to watch, um, and be a part of that. Um, and I do want to say, as a parent, this is really hard and I totally get that. Um, and I know it's hard for the teachers and I hear from them. None of us have ever done this before. I've got, you know, my three boys that are working in different programs in different paces and it's just not easy. And sometimes we just have to say, school's out today. We're not, we're not going to do this because our mental health is really important too. And I hope that everybody remembers that. Take care of yourselves also through all this time and don't stress about the school work. If there's anybody else that wants to share first, otherwise we have a speaker's card to get to.
So I would just like to also, kudos to everybody at the district office, the teachers, the staff. Um, and just like Janet said, as a parent myself, um, I am working remotely, but working from home is not what I thought it was going to be. And so it's a lot of work. Um, and again, teachers have their own kids that they have to teach and yet they actually have to be on, in board, teaching their own students. So, um, again, kudos to all the teachers, but, um, hopefully this time will just pass super quickly. But thanks, everyone.
And I would just like to thank, uh, not just our staff, but also our community partners that are helping us, um, with our families. Because I think this is a time when, uh, we all need to pull together and it hasn't been easy. As you said, Janet, as a parent, I can only imagine what it must be like. Um, but I think if we all just pull together and as you said, take a break and just keep going, keep moving forward. But I think, uh, you all said it very well. We are, um, way ahead of where other districts are and I think it's a, uh, a, a great thing to see. And, you know, even with those, uh, technology issues that Kyle and his staff have been dealing with, we still keep moving forward, keep moving forward and that's just what we need to do. But I, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Baker because it takes a leader to set the pace and I think that he has been doing that, um, greatly. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
But so I won't repeat what was said. I totally agree with it. But, uh, what I would remind everybody is everybody in the district was already working at about 110% capacity and now we've added like another 45, 50%. So it's just really amazing to see everybody respond so positively. Uh, every employee is, is just doing so much and, and has the best attitude. It's just, I'm just very, I just, I'm filled with gratitude.
Great.
Can I just say, Janet, just real quick before we move on, um, I think you brought up a good point that I think, I know we have parents on the line as well, and I do want to just reiterate that, you know, I've definitely been hearing from parents and if you look at Facebook or Nextdoor, the emails we're getting, and it's really hard and a lot of the parents, particularly for those that, you know, have multiple kids, different grades, those that have the young ones, the preschools, the kindergarten, TK, first, second grade, those kids need a lot of, a lot of one-on-one attention, hands-on. You, you know, you can't just say like to a middle schooler, you can say, okay, get online for an hour and do your homework, right? Um, so really I think, you know, I just want to express my empathy, sympathy, uh, support to our parents out there. And I, you know, I hope the communication that Dr. Baker sends out and communication that's going out, you know, basically says exactly what Janet just said. You know, some days it's just going to be schools over and, you know, let your kids play or, you know, bake some bread with them or cookies or whatever, but we're just, you know, it's not going to be the same as all, always. So anyway, just thanks to all the parents. I know that they're really picking up a lot of workload at home as well.
So I think it's really awesome. We actually have over 100 people in our audience tonight. Um, we couldn't have even fit everybody in the boardroom. So I think it's super cool that, um, everybody's here hanging out with us. I do see a few hands up. Um, we're not taking comments by hand. If you can fill out the speaker's card, there's been a link in the chat and we can put it back in again, um, if you just joined us. But we'd love to hear from you. But please do fill out a speaker's card so that we can, um, call you in for this. Um, again, for public comments, we have three minutes per speaker. Um, and on this item, we do have Terracita Carlos. So I think Kyle's going to unmute you and then you can, um, speak to the board. Terracita, are you there?
Yes, I'm right here. Can you hear me, guys?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Um, I just wanted to say, you know, I wanted to thank all the teachers actually because they've been doing a phenomenal job, just they hit the ground running. The first day we found out that we were all going to be, you know, doing all this from home, they did an amazing job. The teacher, Henry Ford, did a marvelous job. We've had all types of meetings or just one-on-one meetings, you know, um, the packets, videos sent out to us as parents. Um, some of the teachers have done daily videos, which I don't know how they find the time to do it, but you guys have done an amazing job. I want to thank the school district as well for doing such an amazing job, but mainly the teachers because they have done a phenomenal job and, um, made it a little bit easier for us as parents to keep up with those packets. I have a daughter in kindergarten, kindergarten and one in first grade, as well as a freshman and a sophomore in high school. And with just having those daily videos that the teacher has been sending out to us, um, you know, giving us exactly what they need to do for the day makes it 20 times easier as a parent. So I just want to thank all the teachers for all the work that they've been doing.
Great.
Thank you, Terracita, for sharing that with us. Um, I don't see any other speaker's cards on this item. Ellie, can you confirm that for me?
Yes, I have not received any more speaker's cards on this item.
Okay. Uh, was there any other, Dr. Baker, was there anything else you wanted to go over with regarding COVID?
No, that was, that was, that was plenty for this evening, I think.
So I'd like to just, um, Terracita reminded me, um, the schools are putting out videos that are not educational content, but they're so inspiring. Like when you, when you watch those videos, you just get a huge smile on your face and feel better. So thank you to all the, the teachers and administrators that are putting all that energy into those videos because they're very uplifting.
Okay. Uh, if that's it, then we can move on to our other discussion items. I did want to ask the board, um, we do have, uh, an item on oral communication, a, a speaker's card that came in for that. And since we're having technical difficulties towards the beginning of the meeting, would it be okay to move oral communication to, um, after all the discussion items?
Why don't you just do it now?
What was that?
Why don't you just do it now since we already passed it?
Do you want to do that?
I don't care.
I'm looking for the other board members. Nod? No? I'm looking for the other board members. Nod? Yeah. Okay. So then we will go ahead and take the speaker's card for oral communication right now. We have Kevin Sugar.
Am I unmuted, Carl?
Yes, you are.
You're on. Go for it, Kevin.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I hope all are well and it's wonderful to see you healthy. I appreciate you setting up this format. As you know, present the Redwood City Teachers' Association and we are currently in, trying to pan out our tentative agreement with the Redwood City School District. And I'm calling just to emphasize how necessary it is to, to continue to commit to the agreements that were signed off and made. I appreciate all of your comments. All of us do, teachers, staff, principals. I have to reiterate, many have been just tremendous to work with. Shout out to Ms. Guzman, my vice principal. She's been able to communicate and chat. That just shows us how hard we've all been working. I appreciate the comments, the 110%, up to 140% work. We all know how stressful the job is. We all miss our kids. We want to get back to them. I just want to reiterate how important it is for the Redwood City Teachers' Association to continue to, to be in this district, to be prosperous and to continue the great work that they are doing. Please consider sticking to the commitments that the board made with the district, with the incredible negotiating team that was recently signed. And we will cross these bridges at, at, at the appropriate times in the future. So again, it's Kevin Sugar and I just want to emphasize how important it is. And I hope that the board is going to stick to their commitments signed on the tentative agreement for us. So we can continue together in solidarity to prosper and make this district even stronger after this strange COVID era that we are living in. I really appreciate you listening. Take good care, everybody. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So we are, I'm 11.2, discussion of revisions to the Board Policy 5131.
Good evening. I have a series of board policies that we'll be reviewing tonight and also in the coming meetings. This is a continual response in preparation for our federal program monitoring. So some of these items you'll see are going, are coming back again for revision. And the main reason is, so we use the platform GAMET that holds all of our policies. GAMET works with the California School Boards Association, so CSBA supports the development of those. For whatever reason, there are some elements that are a part of policies at the federal level that don't quite make it into our policies here through CSBA. And so our federal monitoring uses the most current policies that could have been revised just two weeks ago, right? And because we're under this federal review right now, we have to use the most current policies. And so, so, so some of us read these and you all reviewed them and adopted them back in November, December, in preparation for this federal monitoring. But if there are any updates, we're required to include these. And so for a number of different reasons, you'll see some of them through this evening and the next few meetings, I believe, that we will update. So this is just one example. So in this particular one related to conduct, the only change in this one was that as school board members, you could prohibit or, for the students, you have the use of smartphones while at school or while under the supervision and control of the district employee. So that was the item that was added. Otherwise, I think this one is pretty much, again, taken directly from CSBA. And then once we review them and discuss them today, the idea is at the next board meeting, adopting this would be wonderful. And that is true for all the upcoming ones. So our federal review could continue through the following week as needed. Even with that, some of our board policies won't be improved in time, but we continue to review these. So I guess my, do you have any questions on this first one related to conduct?
I'm seeing people shaking heads no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So then we can move on to 11.3, discussion of revisions to Board Policy 5145.9.
So this one is one that we did review and approved a while ago. This one was updated to define hate motivated behavior and expense the group of protected class. And in addition, this one is related to more extensive training and enforcement of rules regarding student conduct. It provides for ensuring the use of uniform complaint procedures for any kind of behavior and complaints related to any of the protected groups. And so that's, that's the one item that's changed here, which is the bold paragraph in the, in the policy that you're looking at. So again, that was a difference between what CSBA has and what the federal requirement is to include other protected groups. So that's what you see here, those changes. So are there any questions related to this particular one on hate motivated behavior?
Good. I'm seeing shaking heads no. And I'm saying this for the audience's sake because the audience only sees the person that's speaking. So the panelists, we can all see each other. So that's why I'm seeing everybody shaking their head, no questions.
Okay. And I'm reading off of my pages here, so I apologize. Okay.
Okay. So that would be, what are we, item 11.4, Board Policy 6143.
Correct. This is on the course of studies and the process that we follow when we're adopting new courses in our district. And so again, this is updated policy. We took our, I guess our current Redwood City policy updated to meet CSBA requirements and we're updating it again to meet in addition to federal requirements. So the changes that you see are that, which are reflected. That includes again, the protected class, knowing that any classes should be available and offered to any group of students and that there it is prohibited to discriminate against any of the protected class groups. And so that's, that's what's provided in our board policy. Any questions related to that?
None, it looks like.
Okay. So I think I did receive some feedback actually from Dennis and Cecilia. So I wanted to say I took your suggestions for, there were some editing things and etc. So I appreciate that. So thanks for reviewing those. And I did receive those comments earlier. Okay.
Okay. So item 11.5, discussion of revisions to Board Policy 145.5.
So one of the areas that we're being reviewed this year is the area of educational equity. As, as long as I've been doing these federal reviews, this is the first time that educational equity was reviewed in our district, which included a number of different policies related to student organizations, LGBTQ, again, hate policies, uniform complaint procedures, etc. And so this one, I don't believe you've seen the one for us in review. And so I don't believe that there were any, from our current policy to what is here, I don't believe that there are any significant changes. And this is for any organization, so any of the students. So let's say a middle school group wanted to start an organization or a club. Again, we would, based on protected class and educational equity, all groups would, as long as they followed our policy. And so the specific areas for them is under the ARs, so our administrative regulations, letting them know how to apply and what they need to do. And basically that it would be open to any group, any protected class. And if it was going to be run during our school day, that their staff or advisor would support the group. And I think that's, this is the highlights of that particular one.
So I had a question on that one. And my question says, there shall be no sponsorship of the meeting by, by the school or staff. So that sounds like we're going to have students in some sort of club unsupervised. Isn't that a change from what we do?
Yeah. So this particular one is open to those who are not just within our school, but let's say an outside organization who wants to use facilities as well. So, so two different groups that we're talking about, those that are school sponsored during the day and those that are school sponsored, or those that are part of our student body, but not necessarily happening during the school day. So this particular policy includes both. And so can you tell me what specific one you're looking at, Dennis, or what?
It's under limited open forum and it's item two. You and I talked about this, this policy feels like we're mixing kind of students on campus and outside people. And if there was a way, I know it's CSBA, but if there was a way to have it be a little clearer.
Okay. So definitely if it's, if it's during the school day, they wouldn't be able to use our campuses that are, that our students are using, right? So I think that was a question that you brought up, if they were able to hold meetings during lunchtime and not if it was an outside organization, because our students are using it during the school day.
Yeah, I'm actually going the other way. This to me reads like a student chess club. You can do this with, like, like there will be no sponsorship of the meeting by the school or staff. So that, that sounds like I can create something and staff does not have to be involved. And I don't think that's true during the school day.
This one says access to meet on school premises during non-instructional time.
So where do I see that?
Well, the one I'm looking at is your section, limited open forum in the second paragraph. So all student initiated groups shall be given equal access to meet on school premises during non-instructional time without regard for their.
Thank you. Thank you. I missed that word. Thank you.
That's okay.
Yeah. So Dennis, just so you know, when we, you know, the policy committee, we review these before they come to the board. And yeah, I had some of the same questions. I don't think it's as well-written or as easily, easy to read as it could be. But this is sort of a guidance and it does set up the legal requirement. I guess we could take another look at it to see if there's any way for us to clarify. If you have any great ideas, let us know.
No, that's fine. I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the issue is anytime we make a change to CSBA, we then have to keep track of it anytime it changes. So we want to be really careful. But I, I had missed that word. So thank you.
Yeah. And then before we move on, I just want to say thank you very much to Jerry, who helps us keep organized and gets everything out to us and all of that. And thanks to Linda as well. I know we have a few policies still to go and I will look at those tomorrow, I promise.
Yeah, we'll have a few.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. It looks like we're moving on to consent items. I do want to say, just for the audience, we've had a couple of speaker cards coming in, but they're for items that have already passed. So if there are items that we've already passed, we're not going to go back and take speaker cards for those. So if you want to email the board, feel free to do that with your comments or questions, or you can come back and join us at our next meeting. So moving on to consent, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I think that was Dennis and Cecilia was the second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jesse McBride?
Aye.
Jesse Marquez?
Aye.
Jesse Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Jesse McAvoy?
Aye.
Jesse Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. So we have now item 13.1, the recommendation for the approval of permanently renaming 170 Selby Lane and Atherton. We do have a couple of speaker cards on this. So if anybody would like to go ahead and fill out a card, please get that in. We'll let Dr. Baker and the board have a discussion and then we'll take the comments.
So board members, are there any questions in regard to this item that's on the agenda at this point in time? If you recall, we had a hearing back, gosh, March? I have to look. When we were at McKinley and we had many parents at that meeting. It was not only in regard to this, but two other items on the agenda. But my recommendation is to move forward with the name to be the Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School. And we went through a discussion last time that I felt that this was a manner of honoring both Adelante and the Selby Lane communities. And I also at this time want to commend, you know, Mr. Cedar, the president, the principal, and Ms. Denali, the vice principal. So for their leadership and always making sure that everyone who was in the community was involved, that wanted to be involved. And he listened to, I should say, he and she both listened to pros and cons of the names that were brought forward. And they worked very, very collaboratively with the group that was working with them. And I just want to give kudos to them for moving this along and bringing it forward.
So board, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
So I would like to make a comment. First of all, again, just to, you know, clarify, I am a parent at that school site. And it is very hard for me. I don't want to sound like I'm biased. It's a very hard decision. And, you know, being a board member, it's really hard putting you on the spot. And I understand that, you know, we take the oath and we're here for the community. Being at the one board meeting at McKinley, I was a little torn. And I'm like, okay, don't go by the emotions. And I, and I understand, I made a clarification. It was a public hearing. I do want to just point out that when the proposal to merge schools came along back in 2018, that was before I was a board member. It was said that the merger was, or the closing of the schools, so that the most popular choices were going to come and actually attract more students, right? Between, I guess, and I don't even know, and again, because I shouldn't say that I'm a new board member, but I'm torn between the recommendation that Dr. Baker is telling us to go with and actually what the community wants, right? I also would like to pause and also have the community know that not in every situation, when you join a committee, the community's going to get what they want, right? It is unfortunate, sometimes it goes one way or goes, or it goes the other way. The other thing too is, you know, I'm sure all of you guys got emails from a lot of the parents from both sides. I do feel that Adelante had two, and again, I don't want to sound biased, but had two losses. Adelante lost their campus and Adelante lost their principal. So now the Adelante population had to be coming into this new campus and again, making the best of things. I also, if you search the word Adelante, it means to move forward onward. And again, as a community, that's what we should do. But when it comes down to permanently naming the school site is where I find myself, again, as a board member, try to make a decision that is best for the community. And again, I heard by the story. I also remember an email from a parent where they talked about perhaps there's a lot of nostalgia going on with Selby Lane. Now, for those of you that don't know Spanish, when you say the word Adelante Selby, it almost sounds like you're saying Selby Lane moved forward, right, in Spanish? Because it's Adelante Selby versus just the Adelante program. Now, the other Adelante program, as all of you guys know, is a program that started, that is internationally recognized. And at the same time, the word means move forward, right? And at the same time, the word means move forward, right? Ultimately, the community came with the highest numbers. And I understand, obviously, when I was looking at the numbers, the adelante students were 464 versus the Selby Lane. The remaining, again, and the remaining 250 students from Selby Lane were a strand from the adelante program, right? The adelante program was so popular that that is a reason why the district decided to open up this new strand at Selby Lane. So I just wanted to open it up. I mean, I'm open for discussion. I'm just, again, I guess I would stay torn on this situation. So I'm open for discussion, suggestions.
Is there anybody there, board members, that would like to speak?
I'm open to hearing from the community members who would like to speak first. I mean, that might be helpful for me in terms of commenting. Thank you, Cecilia, too, for what you said. Appreciate hearing from you.
So we can take the public comments on this item then. The first person is Michelle Smith.
Working on it now, hang on.
And just a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay. Michelle should be unmuted.
Michelle, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thank you so much for having the meeting today and for listening to us speak. I wanted to start by, I didn't get to talk before about what's all been happening, but I just really want to give a huge sort of shout out and gratitude to the teachers at the Spanish immersion campus. I was bragging about all of the work that they've been doing on Facebook and just really remarkable about all the work that they've put in to being so thoughtful and putting into the packets for our students. Similarly, my daughter is at Kennedy and, you know, the transition was much smoother for them because of their, they already had their Chromebooks. But to the topic at hand, I spoke last time and I was advocating for the name adelante Spanish immersion. And while, and the thing is, is for me, of the sort of three choices, that still is where my heart is. But I spoke to parents afterwards and even my own children. My daughter graduated from adelante and my son is now at the Spanish immersion program in first grade. So he will, you know, spend the next few years there. And from what I heard and from what I hear my kid, from my kids, is they said, it should just be different. It should just, he's like, they're like, of the choices, it should be Unidos. And, and that's what I heard from other parents as well, is, you know, for me, it's either one or the other. Adelante Selby, to me, doesn't really make sense. It's kind of inconsequential, is sort of like trying to appease both, both parties without really satisfying both parties. I feel like it was a bridge name and it wasn't meant to be the forever name. And Billy also sort of talked about how it doesn't, you know, really make sense, especially when you talk about it in Spanish. And so for me, the choice is between, you know, obviously for adelante, but appearing from the other parents and from my own kids, you know, it's, it's one of those two options. It's either Unidos, which also got about the same proportion of the vote as adelante selby. So if it's going to come to sort of like the, a name that's not adelante, I think Unidos would be more appropriate. And it also, and my son said, he's like, because that represents our, both of our communities coming together. Adelante selby does, he did not recognize that as something that really defined what we're doing. So again, I want to thank you all and I really appreciate every, all the work that is going on behind the scenes. It is, we value it, as frustrating as it may be sometimes working with my son. But it is, because of all of the hard work that's going into it, that this is not as crazy as it should be. And I appreciate all of the community services that are also available to our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And our second, I think it's our last comment card on this item, is Rita Melton. Hi Rita, it's like, still muted. There you go. You're unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to our concerns. I want to reiterate what Michelle said about, I truly appreciate how the DO and Linda and John have supported teachers throughout this process. I have, it was, it's phenomenal as far as, you know, giving us the opportunity to kind of just flower in this, in this, in this process. I mean, it really was an opportunity we didn't want and we are learning and not necessarily in ways that we expected. So thank you for that. As far as the name, before, the week before, we, or a few days before we closed, a group of teachers and I met. And we were just not really feeling good about the, what it seems to be the choice was to be going towards adelante selby. And so we started writing a letter, so I'm going to read that. So it's going to sound like I'm reading a letter. Dear Dr. Baker, the process of naming something is important. As those who have witnessed naming a child, niece or nephew, brother, sister can attest. There is deep meaning that goes into this decision. A name is the first interaction that one has when meeting somebody entering a new space or community. A name deeply matters. And luckily, when we heard that the name process would be put off until the two communities merged, this seemed highly appropriate. The community needed time to coalesce and for this, we are appreciative. The naming process appeared transparent and open, which gave us hope that an equitable choice would be made. Having a voting process gave all community stakeholders the opportunity to be heard. Sadly, this feels like it has changed in the near term when we heard that the majority of choice would not be chosen, would not be honored, but that the less supported name would be chosen. We as a staff of Adelante Spanish Immersion School, and because the process that we were, of writing this got cut short, I don't have all the names of the teachers, but I will share them when, when that's possible. We'll be honored, I'm sorry. We, the staff at Adelante Spanish Immersion, and they were all, these were all adelante, former teachers from just the Adelante school, are in united and strong disagreement. This is wrong for several reasons. The first being, the name selby is a person's name, which has no connection to bilingualism or immersion. Thomas H. Selby was a successful businessman from New York City, who served as the mayor of San Francisco. This namesake could not be further connected from the current mission of our school. He came to California to, due to the goal reach not to become bilingual. So there's no valid reason to include this person's name in our school. He was not an advocate for bilingualism nor immersion. There is no connection between the name selby and the immersion program. The name adelante selby was established through a community process over 25 years ago. Our adelante program is award-winning, internationally recognized. Last year, our school was told that we were going to move to a new campus and merge with the Selby Lane immersion strand. This, there seems to be a misunderstanding in which some think that a new school was created, but this is not the case. Per our MOU, there was a consolidation of the programs. The majority of the community voted for the name Adelante Spanish Immersion through a transparent process and we feel that this should be honored. I, in hearing what Michelle said about the name being something else, I also agree with that. If it can't be adelante, then the name Unidos would be a second choice that I would, myself as a person, support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rita. We did have another comment card come in. Sorry, there's a lot of feedback. If you're not speaking as a panelist, can you mute yourself so the feedback go around? One more speaker's card came in, James Carrick.
Okay.
All right, James, you're unmuted.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, board members, for hearing me. I just wanted to reiterate what I said last time, that I really believe that the name should fully either change for a fresh beginning for these students or the Selby adelante. I know the adelante one, or whatever you want to call it with that vote, but that vote was definitely not equitable for all students. You had adelante parents in particular making phone calls, basically like a telethon for names, which, you know, selby parents not apt to do. I'm highly disappointed to hear that teachers are signing petitions from adelante and that they are still hung up kind of on this issue and wanting it to be strictly adelante. I remind the board that, and parents of students there, I'm a, I'm a parent as well. My daughter still goes there, but highly disappointed to hear the teachers there kind of holding on as well, especially when other teachers from Selby had to move on. The students at Selby 400 plus had to move on and were separated. They were not moved together. I just highly disappointed now in the staff over there to hear that that's going on. Again, I would say fresh start, new name altogether. But again, I do thank you for your time. And I, I know it's not an easy decision either way. I would also point out that if a board member has a parent, is a parent on this vote, I don't know how you can't be biased. I would say maybe abstaining from this vote or not voting might be a good way of action there. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There are no further speaker cards. So if the board wants to continue with the discussion, anybody would like to go first?
Well, I can take a crack. So, you know, I'm struggling, which I'm sure, Dr. Baker, you did as well with the decision. And I think, you know, some of the speakers who spoke tonight and other emails that we've gotten, I think it's a hard decision. I appreciated hearing the sort of Spanish translation of adelante selby in terms of moving forward selby, because I hadn't really thought about that twist. I liked the adelante selby because I felt like it was honoring both schools merging together. But in terms of the fresh start, I think that's a really interesting idea. So there's a part of me now, I mean, I'm always one as a board member, like, let's make a decision and move on because we have so many other things to do. And we certainly have a lot of things to do now. But I also think that idea of a name is important and it's also important to honor people at the school site. So there's a part of me, even though it would, it would sort of throw it back potentially to the drawing board, and I don't know if we have the capacity or the will to do that right now. But maybe a new name then. Because I do have concerns if it's only adelante. I do think that we're not honoring selby and all that they went through and, you know, all of that. So and yet the merged name, I'm not sure everybody loves as well. So it honors both communities, but it's kind of lengthy and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, Unidos or maybe another name. And so I got to thinking, I don't know, is it, is it a conversation that maybe the principal or teachers have been having? Would they want to use this as an opportunity over the next couple of weeks to have conversations with their classrooms and come up with a handful of other names? I sort of like the idea of the students taking the lead. If we were going to go that route. I mean, it may be that the vote just says, let's go adelante selby, or the vote says, let's go adelante or Unidos. But there's a part of me that thinks, well, maybe the students, you know, now that we sort of know where we got to, is there an opportunity for the students to come up with a couple of other additional names? A new start, a fresh beginning, as I think, you know, James said eloquently. So I'm open, I'm struggling with this one as well, from, you can get from what I just said. But I, but I do want to honor everybody at the site. So that's where it feels like it starts to get difficult to do that. Unless you use both names, but then is that too much? And so then you need a new name. So anyway, that's, that's my thinking. I would love to hear from other board members or Dr. Baker, because I know you probably had more conversations with the principal and staff and parents there. I don't know what other board members think.
Thanks, Elisa. Dennis or Maria, do you want to jump in at this point? I have some thoughts, but if you guys would like to speak, go ahead.
Go ahead, Janet, then we'll go.
Okay. I'm with Elisa on this, I'm really feeling torn. I understand the desire to honor the selby community with the name adelante selby. I don't like keeping it just adelante because I feel like that doesn't recognize everything that the selby group has been through. And we want to bring them together as one community. And that's where I'm feeling like a new name would have been really appropriate. From what I'm hearing from people who have reached out to me directly, nobody's happy with adelante selby. And especially given the translation of it, it does seem a little strange. And like one of the speakers brought up, like, naming a child is a big deal. And I feel like I would, I mean, I couldn't name my own child something that I hadn't really, really put a lot of thought into it and knew was the right thing to do. And in this case, I'm feeling like I still don't know what the right thing to do is. And I don't want to vote for a name that even in a year or two, or 10 years, I'd look back on and say, geez, I really wish we hadn't done that. I know that the school site really wants to get this done and get a name and, you know, work on changing all the things that need to be changed. But I'm not feeling comfortable making a decision right now. Unless somebody can sway me tonight. Dennis, you're unmuted. Did you, were you trying to say something?
Maria, I can go first.
Okay, so for me, this is about not just bringing the communities together, but really creating a new place. So while we were trying to honor both of them by keeping both names in there, it seems like it may be best to just give it a brand new name. And hopefully, after that, we can get more people that can get behind it. It won't be looking as though you favor one over the other because if you just name it adelante, well, that, you know, would create hurt feelings. And to me, it's more about having a community that's really together, not one that's unhappy for this reason or that. And, you know, the children adapt a little bit more easier than us adults. So I think it's for that reason, Dr. Baker, that I would suggest that we send it back and look for a new, creative new name. Having said that, though, I think it would be important if you could provide some guidelines because as we heard, you know, we had a lot of ideas. And it could be a person name, it could be a place, it could be a word. So if you could kind of give them a little guidance on where to go, I think that might narrow the field a little bit and make it easier for them.
So Maria, the board policy on naming a school actually does have it spelled out very clearly. And the, we did have that.
Yeah, I couldn't remember exactly what it said, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Dennis?
Yeah, so, so I've been struggling as well and that's kind of why I went last. I, you know, if I think back to when I got on the school board, someone wisely said to me, when you make a decision, half the people are going to like it and half the people aren't. But this feels different to me. This, this feels like it's a school and it's a lasting name. We have history where we've changed things and people are upset. And then when people come in after that group of parents have kind of moved on, they don't know any different and it seems to be fine. But with all that said, I would suggest we, as much as I don't want to do this because everybody's so busy, I would go back to the drawing board. I am struggling with the name Unidos. That doesn't like grab me, so that's not. So that's not to say you don't come back with it, but that's not a name that really kind of gets me excited for a school. But I do feel like we're just going to alienate everybody, you know, nobody's going to be happy with what's been done.
I know there were other names that were suggested that were already in the list that weren't in the top three that went to Dr. Baker. I really would like this school to have a name to go back to, you know, next year when we go back to school, hopefully. I don't want to draw it out past summer. Is there any way we could bring that committee together one more time, you know, via Zoom? Would that be too much for them to be able to go over a couple of new names?
So what I would need to do, number one, I need a vote from you. So maybe after you give me the vote, then I can go forward.
So I will make a motion then, oh.
Go ahead, Alisa.
So I will make a motion that we very much appreciate Dr. Baker and his recommendation and all his hard work and the committee's hard work. But after hearing from the public and comments and trying to come up with a name that's moving forward, that's uniting the community and moving us forward, that we'd like the committee to meet again, maybe with feedback from students as well as, you know, parents and staff and coming up with maybe two or three other new names that we could consider and try to do it sooner than later. And I guess, well, that's.
So can we, I think we need to.
That's a long motion.
We need to modify the motion, yeah.
Send it back to Dr. Baker to, I mean, I guess we need to follow our policy. Can I say, before I make the motion, you know, one thing I know that, you know, the list of names had a variety of names. I do think in hearing a lot of the comments that since it is a Spanish immersion school, that it does feel like it should have a connection to Spanish immersion. Because I think there were some names on there, like maybe an astronaut or something like that. Now, maybe it was a bilingual astronaut, you know, someone who knew Spanish and English. That might be different, but I do think a way to honor the school is to ensure that the name does have something to do with Spanish immersion or Redwood City or something like that. Anyway, I didn't really give you a motion, John, but other than, I think we'd like some other other names that would be unifying that are a fresh start or new. I think that's what I heard from my colleague.
So I think we're making this harder than it needs to be. I think the motion can be as simple as we reject the name of the school.
Yep, that's it. That's it. That's all I need.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reject the name Adelante Selby, Selby Spanish Immersion.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Maria. Ellie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye. So Dr. Baker, then, what would be the plan going forward?
So the plan going forward would be for me to regroup with Mr. Cedar and Ms. Denali and then I have to look at the board policy again and follow those guidelines because I need to go by those guidelines that was policy that was put in place that you approved. Though I will not deviate from those guidelines. So just to understand that, I will go by it word by word, what's on that policy and follow through.
So I don't have the policy in front of me, but I will say, I think that it gives you a lot of freedom in even just going back to the names that were presented and not even having to go back to a full committee. I think it does give you that freedom to do that, but I don't have it sitting in front of me right now.
I'll reread it tomorrow, but I want to definitely meet with Mr. Cedar and Ms. Denali.
For sure. And I don't think you need the whole committee.
And then also Jorge about it.
And then I think also just.
Go ahead, Dennis.
So I'm very concerned by Mr. Carrick's comments where he believes the deck was stacked and my words, I think that's what he was implying. And so is there a way to, I mean, it's going to be hard because parents are in a really hard time right now with survival. And so this probably for a lot of our parents, this isn't going to rise to where they're going to really focus on it. And so how do we assure that we can get as many parents to vote and weigh in versus, you know, some parents do a phone tree and kind of skew it. And I don't know the answer, but if there's a way to get, you know, if we can get like 60, 70% of the parents to vote and that maybe this would be too high, Jorge's laughing probably that I would think it could be that high.
According to the policy, they didn't even have to go to the parents for a vote. It was just up to the committee and the committee decided to go out for a vote.
And in fact, you know, one of the things I wanted, oh.
Cecilia?
One of the things I wanted to mention as I am looking at the policy, and it does say the committee will choose two to three names to be submitted to the superintendent. The superintendent will then make a recommendation to the Board of Education. The Board of Education should approve the name by a majority vote. So one of the things I think when we do go back to the school side or the committee, we need to make sure that they understand the expectations because I think that there were some committee members or some school members that thought that the vote was sort of the final thing. And so I think that's where some of the disappointment lies. So really it's the recommendation of two or three names and then the superintendent would then in turn make a recommendation to us. So. Yeah.
Well, I think given that, it might be better not to have them go out for a vote of the top three names and just for the committee to choose their three.
Are we violating that policy though by doing that? See, I need to go through and I need to read it. So would we be violating the policy? Because I don't know if we put anything in the policy, if it was not approved, what you would do. Does it say that, Alisa? I don't have it pulled up in front of me. I have the.
Well, I'm just, I'll make sure, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You know, basically, we need to approve it by a majority vote. We have not done that, but you would then be sending it back to the group. So no, it doesn't cover like what if they say no, it's that it just says the Board of Education should approve the name by majority vote.
All right, so it goes back to the guidelines that are in the policy. Though that's what I need to read and that's what I need to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it does say before adopting any proposed name, the board shall hold a public hearing at which members of the public will be given an opportunity to provide input. So if this goes back to the committee and they choose two to three names to be submitted to you as a superintendent, then you make a recommendation, we would have a public hearing again and get input from everybody and then have another meeting to approve or disapprove, right?
Right.
So do you think we'd be able to have a public hearing by June or is that too soon?
I don't know. I need to talk to, again, I want to go back to the principal, the assistant principal and have Jorge on there and we have a timeline and see how we can do this. We'd have to do it all, you know, virtually like we're doing right. Yeah.
You know, and maybe if the committee, I mean, it, you know, it gives gives direction to the committee to come up with the name, but maybe in the principal talking to the committee members, you know, maybe there is a survey monkey or something that could be developed or, you know, something to make it easy but collect data. But I do sort of agree with the voting. I think since the community is, well, if it's a new name, it's a different story. When you had, you know, two thirds Adelante parents and one third Selby parents, it kind of skews the data coming in, I think. If it's a new name, then it's a little different.
Okay.
And thank you, John and the committee and Mr. Cedar. I know that there was a lot of work that went into this, a lot of meetings and a lot of thought. So I do want to acknowledge that and I appreciate all of the thought that has gone into this. With that said, it looks like we can move on to item 13-2, the joint use agreement with Touchstone Learning.
Priscilla, did you want to give an overview on that piece? The agreement that we changed due to COVID-19. Can you unmute her? There she is.
I'm sorry, I muted. So we have an agreement with Touchstone that provided the first agreement that we have with Touchstone provides them a 60 days flexibility to obtain permits and everything. And that 60 day would have ended in April 17th. And so because of the shelter in place, Touchstone is unable to move in and start operation. So since they are unable to start business, they have asked for a waiver of the rental. So since we, and Touchstone also made an effort to determine if they could get some fiscal assistance or financial assistance from any agency. But because they weren't able to start operation, they don't qualify. So they have asked for a waiver and so we work with them, including our legal counsel. So we have, we decided we're going to provide a waiver of the rent through August. So whether or not the school reopens in August, the rent will start on August 1st, 2020.
So just some other information, and I know that Priscilla and I met with each of you board members in regard to deferrals and so forth for many of our entities that are renting with us right now. So since COVID-19 started and people were being, had to work from home, there were some of our entities that furloughed their staff. And so they are not receiving any dollars at this point in time as far as to deliver their services. So with that being said, we have put into place a deferral plan for those people who are renting with us right now, like Kids Corner, that's up at, I think that's what it's called, that's what it's called up at Cloud in Clifford. And there's some others that have also approached Priscilla regarding this. Now, we also put into the letter that if they were able to receive any of the federal dollars and they could, you know, pay that back. But what I've since learned, especially from the owner of Kids Corners, they applied for the money, but the money was already gone, as we've heard in the news. So I don't know with this next piece of stimulus that is coming out, if they will be able to, those that were in existence, not Touchstone, because Touchstone was not in existence with us, so that's why she couldn't even apply. But the others that are with us, if with the new stimulus dollars, are they able to apply for those and receive some dollars? They're going to try, the entities that I've spoken with, but you know, it's not a guarantee. So we'll just see what happens, but we are doing deferrals for other entities that are with us right now. The letter is going out and I think many of you have seen the letter that we sent out. Lisa?
Yes, I was just going to say, John, what you just said, you know, San Mateo County Strong, their small business program will open on Monday and it's a first come, first served. And the employees need to be between two and 10. So and the employer can be counted as one of the employees. You could have the owner, employer, and then one other. So that's between two and 10 employees for the business. And Redwood City put in $300,000, so you can apply for up to $10,000. And so that'll be for 30 businesses, plus there's other county money. But what they said is that it'll be first come, first served. For the, you know, they have to be eligible, they have to get through the eligibility, but then they'll be along with, and I think it opens at noon. I'll send you the link again, but to make sure, we should get that out to any of our leasees who might be eligible for the local funding. And then they should also apply again for the state funding because they're basically putting more into that.
Right. And did you know, did they have to maintain their employees on the payroll? Or if they let them go, would they still be eligible?
You know, I don't know for the local, Dennis or Jan, or does anyone else remember? I didn't see that as one of the criteria, but I don't remember.
Okay.
I think that money will be gone by 12:10.
I think you're right, Dennis.
It's only 130 people. And they're going to have probably thousands of people.
Right. And then what they'll do though, is they said they'd have a, you know, they'll keep the list and then figure out the need. And I think they are going to be going to ask for, you know, they're going to try to find more donations and stuff. So anyway, the point is you may as well get your name in if it's not too much work because, you know, and they'll tell, similar to what Papi was talking about, they'll take different, like, you know, photos of things and that sort of thing. But I do think you want to get in the queue because if you wait a couple of days, you're never going to see money. But if you got it in, try to get it in at noon or 12:02, you might at some point see some money. So I'll send you that link.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments on that item? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lisa and Maria, roll call vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Item 13-3, the approval of personnel report.
Thank you. The personnel report is brought to you a few times a year to review and it shows the changes in the classified and certificated personnel as it surrounds leave, resignations, retirements, et cetera. So I was wondering if there was any questions regarding the report for either group.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing heads shaking, no. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria? Do we have a second?
Cecilia?
Cecilia? And roll call vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Item 13.4, approval of variable term waiver request.
Yes, we have a phenomenal SDC teacher up at Roy Cloud and we do have sometimes difficulties between state to state credentialing. And so in this particular case, the teacher needs an extension of time to fulfill one requirement. But very, very qualified teacher. Any questions about this?
So moved.
That was Alisa.
Second.
Maria, and a vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye. And moving on to our final action item, 13.5, approval of resolution 25.
Are there any questions for Priscilla on this?
So moved.
Second.
Dennis and Maria, and a vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Locum?
Aye.
Tracy McAvoy?
Aye.
Tracy Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. I did check in with Ellie, but it's after nine. Does anybody need a break right now or are we good to keep going? Can you give me a thumbs up if you want to keep going? Okay, we'll keep moving on. Moving on to item 14, reports from board members and superintendent. Who would like to go first? Dennis?
All right, I'll go. So I was working with Jerry Hill's office to try to get the state CDE federal monitoring delayed, and I had an epic failure on that, so they're, they're actually in working with, they were in, actually, on spring break, working with Linda, and they're still here. So. So apparently bureaucracy trumps distancing and common sense. That's all I have.
Yeah, it's amazing that we can be in an emergency situation and they're just gonna carry on, right? Well, thank you, Dennis, for trying. So I'll go ahead and go. We did have a Samatyo County School Boards Association virtual Zoom meeting, and we're beginning discussions about how to move forward as an association, and still providing networking and educational opportunities to our members. So, more on that, but I will say that some of the topics that it seemed like we're hearing from board members that they have an interest in is, of course, distant learning, and what, what the school might look like for next year, kind of like what we talked about earlier. And of course, whatever we would do there, we'd be coordinating with superintendents as well. But just in terms of sharing best practices, practices, coming up with protocols, those sorts of things. There was some conversation about ethnic studies that evidently is still moving forward in the state, and the ability to comment and provide information there. Special education was another topic of interest, and then equity. So I think the idea is to maybe try to have some working sessions where school board members who are interested in various topics could come together and discuss and share best practices, and sort of like what we would do with our dinner meetings, but moving those to Zoom. So more on that. If you have any ideas of things that you'd like for the Samatyo County School Boards Association group to be talking about, let me know, or you can let Lima know. And, and then, of course, we're having those county calls on Thursdays, which I think others of you are participating in. And I don't, I think the link, that is going out as an announcement, right? Is everybody getting that? Cecilia and Maria, Janet, okay.
I'm getting it, yeah.
Yeah, so those are Thursday meetings that Nancy McGee is leading, and there's a couple of other superintendents on the calls as well. And, and then just, you know, sitting in on the county calls that the county manager does, and I find those pretty useful. I like the federal and state updates. So that's about, oh, and then, of course, our policy committee, we've been working a little bit there. So, thanks.
Maria or Cecilia, did you have any to report?
We had the Redwood City two-by-two meeting, right? And I think that was it. I think the rest of them were mentioned.
Cecilia, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. And then mine would just kind of be a little bit of everything that you've already said. Policy, I think we had a bond team meeting. And then the, the county calls and the Samatyo CSBA call also. I've really appreciated the ones with the, the county manager. I feel like we've gotten a lot of information from that. I do think that the school board one could be a little more robust, some more information, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there. So that's all I have. Dr. Baker?
I think most of mine was conveyed during the COVID-19, with the exception, I just need to make sure that we need to have a closed session, and we can't get in discussion right now, but it's regarding the Stratford project. We did get a letter that were not, they're out of the agreement at this point in time. But I'm not going to any specifics, because I can't, but we need to have a closed session with Janet Mueller regarding that, and that'll be at the next board meeting.
So you want to have that at the May sixth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on to fifteen information. Fifteen-point-one is contract update information and credit card summary. Are there any questions or comments? Can you shake your head so I can, unless you want to? Okay. Fifteen-two, information on Samatyo County Investment Fund. Were there any questions or comments? None? Okay. Fifteen-point-three, quarterly Williams report. Questions or comments? None. Thank you. Correspondence? None? Okay.
I think we, we all got emails regarding the Adelante Selby Lane name.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, and then we also got a really nice email that Patricia forwarded us about the special ed department at Roosevelt, and all the amazing things they were doing for special ed students there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I love the correspondence that we're getting from some parents and teachers and staff, just, you know, highlighting some of the highlights that are going on. And then I have gotten, and I'm sure you're getting too, from some parents that I think are struggling, where it is really hard to have their kids at home, and to feel the responsibility of educating them. It's, it's a lot, so.
And I, I will say, because they're in the audience right now, Amy Barstad and Michelle Beutler have sent a lot of good information to, and sharing what's going on in their classrooms and virtually, so I appreciate getting those from teachers. So if there are any other teachers out there that want to share what you're up to, we would love to see it and hear it.
Yeah, because now we can't, we cannot just drop into a school and drop into a classroom, so you've gotta invite us into your classroom now.
That's a really good point. Yeah, yeah. Okay, number seventeen, other business suggested items for future agenda.
So one thing that I noticed when I looked at the, well, I guess it's the board agenda calendar, that I think it needs to get updated, you know, in terms of what we're actually talking about at the different meetings. So I think it's, anyway. So maybe Dr. Baker and Janet, you could take a look at that and figure out with staff what still makes sense to actually talk about for the rest of the year.
Yeah, that's.
And then what you might just put off to next year.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah.
So could I ask a question, and it's, it's a really simple question, but I think every board member has it on their mind. When is the Governor's May revise coming out, Priscilla?
It's scheduled around May fifteenth.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Okay, where are we? Item eighteen, changes to the board agenda schedule. Other than having to move things around and, and remove some items, I'm assuming nothing else? Okay, looks like we're at the end.
John, the only, the only other thing I might mention, and I don't know, I'll just ask the other board members, you know, with the stay-at-home, shelter-in-place, work-at-home, I personally have flexibility in the day, so I don't know if Maria and Cecilia, if you do as well. But I thought I would just throw it out there, because I know normally we've been locked into needing to do things at, you know, after six o'clock. But for some of the closed sessions, if it's easier to do it during the workday, I just wanted to throw that out there. Or whether it's a committee meeting or something like that, I just wanted to say that I have more flexibility, because I am home more and managing the schedule that way, so, anyway. But, but that may not be the, I don't know, Cecilia, Maria, if your days have more flexibility, or if you're, you know, at a virtual desk in the same way.
Yeah, so I'm working remotely, so it would be, I mean, I could do anything after four-thirty, so I could just do it earlier, just not during the day.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can do it after four-thirty, too. I'm home at the moment, but that could change. I just have to work part-time. So.
Anyway, it may not be necessary, but I just thought I'd throw that out there in case. It's helpful.
Okay, I meant to say this earlier in the meeting, but to all of the teachers and parents that are in our audience right now, if you have a classroom or a student that would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please take a video of it and email it to me, either janetlawson@gmail.com or jlawson@rcsdk8. We would love to have more students. I've just been emailing the people that I know, but if you're out there and you want to show off your student, we would love to see it. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Actually, oh, hold on, real quick, Janet, that, I love that idea of the, of the Pledge of Allegiance. It got me thinking that maybe there's an opportunity, I don't want to add more work onto staff, but if, you know, there was a teacher or school side who wanted to have a little video clip or something as part of our board meeting, it might be nice to have sort of a student inspiration to kickstart these Zoom meetings. Again, I don't want to make it complicated. Maybe it is just sending it to Janet, and then she plays it. But in addition to the pledge, that might be kind of a nice thing to do, you know, partway through the meeting, or, because, you know, we had been getting school reports, or sometimes you'd have students come and talk about things, but it's a little harder, so.
Yeah, and I think if we do that, it would be, probably just send it to me, because I think we decided that's probably the easiest way to do this, and I can just share it from my computer.
I mean, even like a little video of artwork that they're doing or something, you know, kind of inspirational moment from a student or students or classroom. Okay. So anyone who's on the call, feel free, Janet just offered.
Okay, so there was a motion from Dennis. Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
Maria, I think. So all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, we'll see you at our May sixth meeting at seven o'clock, but we'll have a closed session before that.
Yes.